Whoa, this is our board, Daniel?
I hurt my shoulder the other day in this bruise, so it won't go out very far, but the left hand works pretty good.
Hi, Daniel.
Perry Beecham.
Just call me Dan, okay?
Okay, Dan.
Where's the hot seat?
Right there.
We have a city council member and our mayor is with us as well.
Go ahead, please. Sorry about that. That's okay. Left hand, a lot of harm. You mind if I take off my jacket? Not at all. My dress pants got run, so they got banged around so much they come unfolded out of the deal and they was, it looked like my forehead wrinkled. So, so we're recording, huh?
We are recording. We're live.
Are we live? All right, here we go.
So, Daniel, welcome and thanks for coming up and visiting with us today.
Long ways.
It is a long way. Long way from Wiley, Texas?
Yes, sir.
And so, what we thought would be appropriate is if you just give us a little bit of information about your background and...
Okay, uh, well, it started early, you know, about sixty-eight, actually. My dad owned a electric company and contractor and started messing with it when I was young with him and went all the way up, went to work for Denton Power Company. When I graduated from high school, he said that would be the best thing to do, to learn the other side of the trade. Well, it's the best side of the trade, believe me. I tried to go back and, when I retired from Denton and run his for a while, but I didn't, I didn't enjoy it. My brother-in-law wanted it, so I just sold it to him, so that's still... And I spent many years with Denton, started as a grunt on line crew, worked my way all the way up to management and finally superintendent over operations, which today, that position, same number of people and everything, but it's called the general manager's job. So, that's what they, he does. It's a pretty good life there at Denton, it's just a lot of politics and after all them years, I was just ready to move on. I wanted to see something else and I went to Altus for a while, for eight years, they was in trouble. Mike Hyland, I talked to him in APPA and he said they was really, had bad losses and stuff and he said, "Why don't you just go up there for a while and fix it?" So, I went up there. We had thirty percent plus losses on the system. Their reliability was somewhere about ninety-eight point one, so, pretty bad. The mayor at that time wanted to fire every one of them. I said, "Ah, it's easier to fix them than, than fire them." But they would never leave the office till they had something down. Nothing. They did nothing for almost, almost fifteen years, they did nothing. No maintenance, no, only the new construction that they had to do, no improvements, so we went in there and we changed that out. In that years, we changed out a little over sixteen hundred poles. We did twelve and a half miles of upgrade on the system, rebuilt ten miles of transmission line, built new subs and bring the losses down to four point eight and two thousand fourteen, we had a system reliability of ninety-nine point nine-nine-eight-eight, which is the best in Oklahoma at that time. So, we won the award and got our big award for, for that, so you know how that is. I say y'all got several down there on the wall. So, it's, it's a, it was fun. It was fun going up there and, and doing it. It's just, we get a new mayor, after two terms of the other one, I was ready to go. I mean, it was, it was fun being up there, but the new group that took over, they're not about wanting to keep improving. All they wanted to do was status quo and spend the money on the general government side. Their charter, they took everything that was left over out of the budget. In other words, if you had a budget of, we had a budget of seventeen million, something like that, seventeen million and a dollar, anything over that dollar up, they took automatically. So, you couldn't put nothing back for improvement or anything like that, we had to fight for it. I made a deal with the original mayor to, every, every time we saved him a million dollars, he gave us three hundred thousand extra in the budget to do more improvements and that's how it worked in the beginning, so it seemed like we was always negotiating that point. Then when the new mayor come, he'd wanted to, he didn't want to do none of that, so it was the way they sold tires, so that's, I mean, I was good with that. I mean, that's, that's third deal. The guy that took over, worked for me, I trained him, he's doing a pretty fair job and he calls from time to time. So, that's me, I mean, I just...
Mr. Public Public?
My wife says I'm a workaholic. Well, I have spent a lot of time in DC, believe me. In the early days, in the nineties, eighties and nineties, I was a vice chair of transmission distribution and the chair for my term and I was on the original safety book committee when we did that. I believe in safety, I believe in teamwork and I believe in making it right. The more money you make with that power company, the better off your city ought to be, the better off your company ought to be. And when you, when you reinvest in yourself, always think it's the best way to go, so...
And so, with all that experience and looking, looking at, coming up and seeing us a little old, old Michigan, tell us a little bit about that.
I applied four positions, I'll tell you. I applied here, I applied Westerville, Ohio, for the Idaho County Co-op and one other we're not gonna mention, they didn't even...
You were just looking for snow or what?
You know, I've been in Texas all my life. My grandmother lives in Northwood, Ohio. I got a handful of cousins and a granddaughter lives in Calcasas. I have kinfolks in Erie, Michigan and I know I have at least sixty of them in Toledo. Now, my mama was from Toledo, okay? My daddy is a Texan, so you see the, see the difference. My daddy, my granddaddy worked for National Supply, that's how my mother ended up in Gainesville, Texas, actually really close to Powder Point, so National moved him down there back in the fifties and that's how it ended up, so... But she graduated from Libby High, Toledo, so... I got a grandfather, which is not married to my grandmother anymore, but he lives in Flint, we won't talk about him, I think he's in the mafia, but you know, I don't know. He does pinball, cigarette machines and pool tables, you know, I don't see him very often, once every ten, fifteen years, so I think the last time was in eighth grade, so...
So, okay...
But I'm an electric guy.
So, when you were working at Altus and you described it, when you went there, they were in trouble, um, all they did was sit around and drink coffee until they went, until they had a power down and then they went out. So, how did you, so, I'm sitting there perceiving this and I'm going, "Okay, you had a bunch of guys that didn't want to work." Um, how did you overcome, I mean, what was your management style? How'd you overcome that? How'd you get them to, to buy in and say, "We're gonna go out there and we're gonna, you know, we're gonna start working on this and not just take care of power poles when they get blown down"?
Well, first thirty days, I did nothing but watch them. They had assistant superintendent, it's been there forty years and he made it quite clear that, you know, if, you know, he should have been the, the person that was in charge, okay? And so, I watched them for about thirty days and when it takes you sixteen hours to change out a C1, you're in trouble. And, and one thing I realized is the guys that was calling theirself linemen were not linemen. I noticed them taking their apprenticeship program and they give the answers to the apprentice so he can fill out his test so he can get his raise. Well, that didn't set good with me, so I threw that apprenticeship program away, redid it and made it go with Department of Labor. The substation, and I added the substation electrician to them with the Department of Labor, which if you'll look at it, if you ever get a chance, I wrote that when I was at Denton, that's my program, because we started the substation electrician one in Denton. It's a pretty good one, if I do say so myself. But, we, management, the, the, the three supervisors and, and the superintendent there, he, they didn't want to change. They liked it like it was and we had a windstorm, I mean, I just got there and we had a windstorm. They called it a downburst. I call it tornado, because when metal's twisted, when I-beams are twisted, I call that a tornado. It's just me, but we had a pretty good group. Well, I called Denton and said, "I need two line crews and, you know, some four or five service trucks to come up and help me for mutual aid." And when these gentlemen, when these linemen at Altus seen, when they changed out fourteen poles in five days and Denton changed out sixty-eight, life changed. Them guys really wanted to be a lineman then, not the supervisors, the guys that are in the field, they wanted to be a lineman. So, I sent three or four of them to the Next Linemen Rodeo for the APPA and let them watch it and see what linemen are. And attitudes started changing, groups started moving over and then it was finally put to them, the supervisors either change with us or go ahead and retire. I had issues when you got forty, he had forty-three years of service and zero sick time on the book, I have issues with that anyway. You know, I just couldn't prove that is abuse, but I was working hard on it. I do not like anybody to abuse it. It's there for a right, it's not, it's not given to you to abuse and a lot of times, over the course of Denton, when we was coming up, the bosses always made a rule that was blanket. I do not believe in blanket policy. I believe if you got somebody messing up, fix that person. Don't change a rule for the whole group, you know, and make it harder on the rest of the guys that are doing nothing wrong. So, that's what I did. It was a lot of teamwork there, but it was, it was...
Was it a union, was it a union house?
No, sir, they were not a union house.
When you were working at Denton, is correct?
Denton is not a union. Denton voted out the union, never, actually, they've had, I don't know, twenty votes over the last thirty years, but they have never let the union in. Denton's, you gotta understand, Denton's the highest paid lineman in the state of Texas and got the best benefits and better than all the unions, because management made it that way. We worked hard to get that like that. And to, we got tired in the early days of training somebody else's linemen. We wanted to keep our linemen, so we had a boss at the time, when I was the superintendent of operations, she agreed that it was time to fix this problem and we fixed it and that's how we fixed it.
When you were at Altus, did, did you report to a board or to the city council or...?
When I first started, I reported to the board and worked at the pleasure of the council.
Okay.
Okay? Then they had a charter change and again got a city manager and then I worked for the city manager for a couple of months there. That's when we got the new everybody, so... It wasn't, I mean, the city manager, I mean, he was actually very good. I mean, he was actually very open. He, he had a electric utility before, he was very open to suggestion, all you had to do is show it to him. It's just like, you know, you had to show it to the council too and the board too, but you just have to prove your point. I mean, you just have to show them where you can turn this dollar into two dollars and or make the system better and lower your loss expense of money, do whatever you need to do. It depends on each system's different, but you can, there's a variety, there's a variety of ways that you can improve a system, even if it's one of the best.
Can, can you tell me what you know about Lowell?
What I know about Lowell? I know I love the little riverboat out there, okay? Got Robert E. Lee on it, I like Robert E. Lee. I didn't know a lot about it, but when I applied a while back, I looked at everything I could. I read a lot of stuff about, I think it was your ex-city manager. I read quite a bit of stuff.
You still wanted to come through?
Well, you know, just because other people have issues don't mean that I'm gonna have that same issue, you know? I might have a whole group of another ones, you know? Everybody's human, it's the way you, you go about it. What intrigued me, to be honest with you, is the citizens that you got upset. And this was a couple of months ago, meetings and stuff that I was watching, you got some citizens that don't trust you and just, everybody has them, don't blame them, but I'm very good with that. I love to talk to customers. I like to show them how it really works and have a very good transparent organization that if they want to know how we fix them or how we go about something, I like to show them. I'll take a few minutes a day and show a citizen that owns you, you know, you did, somebody said, when I went to Altus, I had, I had eight, nine bosses on the council, eight on, nine on the board, I had, you know, twenty thousand other customers out there. You know, you think about it, you do, you really do, when you work for the public and you have to have that same attitude. You can't get upset about it, all you gotta do is go be upfront with them. Never tell them a story, they'll, you'll never live it down, you'll have to go bye-bye somewhere, because, because you're never gonna live it down. So, just tell them the truth, tell them the facts. Now, there are certain things that happen in executive sessions, they will never hear nothing like that from you, but the stuff of how we do things, how we, how we trying to make it better for them, what that does. A lot of citizens that are mad don't really understand that piece of the pie that you send over to that general government and what they do with it, how they keep theirself operating. And that's all about public and our motto in APPA was always, you know, locally owned. Well, that tells you something right there, them people are the ones you need to listen to. Talk to them. It, you don't have to explain it over their head, but you can, you can explain a lot of things to individuals that are upset about something. I've had hundreds of them, lot of them in Altus. They just didn't understand how come we needed a quarter cent more than we was getting. Well, we really didn't need it, because, because anything's over your normal costs as a power company that went to the city is basically a tax. I mean, anything over is a tax or, I think y'all caught, tax in lieu of, or payment in lieu of taxes, so y'all's pilot, so anyways, it's just, it's just explanation. If you hide it from them, you're gonna have a storm. If you upfront with them, talk to them, get them involved in it, you know? Wouldn't y'all like to see that room full and dealing, they're happy with their power and happy with everything? It'd be a treat. I ain't never seen it quite great yet, but I seen it good, I seen it bad. I like it good, so that's what I would do. Did that answer your question? I'm a long-winded Texan, so, so get ready, just knock on the door or something, tell me, "Hey, shut up."
I'll let these guys get, get a word in, because we got a couple of other questions each.
Is this mine?
Yep. Lowell Light and Power is currently implementing two new combustion turbines and partnering with a private investor on a biodigester. What type of similar projects have you been involved with in the past?
Well, Altus didn't have no generation, it didn't sold theirs. In Texas, when they deregulated, we got out of the power plant business and we, we had a company called OMPA and I think y'all have, our TMPA, Oklahoma had Altus, we had OMPA and I think y'all have Michigan.
OMPA.
MPPA. And it works the same way. When I sat on the board of directors of OMPA, I had a lot of experiences of understanding how much we got in the power plants, how much we spend in the power plant, how much it can cost you for repairs when they go down and how to get that back to a rate, especially when you're incorporated with a investor owned that wants to show a profit to their people, how you take that back and put it to a low cost back to your citizens or back to your city owner. And so, we, I worked on a committee there, which was Generation and it was a, it was a good committee, I was on it for over a year there to kind of understand the nuts and bolts of it. We did a, we did a landfill and then we did a super, a super alter, alter critical unit for peaking, say that right, super alter critical, uh, unit that was gas and for peaking and stuff. And then we're the only, and we built the coal plant in Turk, which is right across the border into Arkansas. We did that and that was about it on Generation. When I was a young guy, on standby for the distribution side, I used to go up to a power plant and they used to let me operate the power plant. They taught me how to, you know, build up, build up steam, start a unit, sink them in, you know, went off through the deals and that got me kind of excited when I got off service truck, I went to the substation transmission side so that I could learn that part of it. And it was fun, but distribution, buying power's one thing, running a power plant's a whole different. I don't mind working with other people to get the best deal we can from buying people, buying power and making it efficient. I like that part of it. Sitting in a power plant, I never enjoyed. It's, you see the same wall, I like to see the, something go by the window every once in a while. And distribution, substations, transmission is my favorite and more my forte. Operations is my best skill. I can, I can get a whole system back on. You give me a map and I'll know the map in just a few hours. I will get your system back on. That's, that's what I like to do, it's fun. I mean, it's, that's, that's what keeps an old man younger is to keep going, you know? So, I like to, and I'm old, don't get me wrong, I'm old, but I'll, you won't ever regret me, so...
All right. Also, recently Lowell Light and Power ratified a contract with the IBEW. What experience do you have with solving problems between coworkers and management that would help to prevent future conflicts?
Well, it goes back to the old game, you have to do one thing and you have to do it well, other than I hadn't done that today, but you have to listen. You have to listen at both sides and you have, it doesn't matter if this employee and this employee's having a deal or the management and the unions having it, you have to listen. You have to have the ability to hear the whole gamut of suggestions, problems, everything, pay, benefits, everything. Listen to their whole concern and then work out details. It's just a negotiation. I've been, I've been selling stuff, buying stuff for power companies. Denton, my, my purchasing limit at Denton, man, thirty, forty million dollars a year and I always make good, I always make sure we got good stuff and the best stuff we could for the dollar and made the dollar stretch as well as we could. Same way with people. You just have to talk to them, you have to listen to them first and then you have to put it down and, and work out both sides. It's, it's, to me, everybody negotiates. You negotiate when you buy a car, you negotiate when you buy a house, you, you know, what I'm doing right here is a little bit of negotiation, I'm just selling you meat. So, that's, that's, that's how I would do it. I would, I would listen first. I would, don't open my mouth to make myself a fool. I'd rather listen and make sure that we're on the right page before I stick my foot in my mouth. You know what I mean? So...
Good advice. Andrew?
Yeah, so, I guess my questions are that, based on your research of Lowell, you said you've done some already.
Some, yeah.
What do you feel are the major challenges and opportunities that the whole community of Lowell face and how could Lowell Light and Power ensure that the most positive outcomes for those, those challenges and opportunities?
Well, one thing that I've noticed is you, you're not increasing in people. You have to have, a power company is like a watermelon vine, you, you're either growing or you're dying. So, how do we make it grow? How do we attract smaller businesses to start with and then move on up to bigger businesses? Because, you know, I worked at Denton, we had a hundred and two industrial customers. That's anybody over twenty-five-hundred KVA. We had a hundred and two of them, not counting the thousand we had that was over a thousand KVA, okay? So, we didn't, you know, when I started at Denton, we were sixty, when I left Denton, we was four hundred megawatts. It's eight hundred megawatts today. So, growth comes to some places. Altus, we started at seventy-five KW when I got there and we was at sixty-one when I left and we added customers. We lost no customers. Losses, we had big losses, that's why. But we did have growth and we did go out and we pursued. One thing about working for a city, you go out and you, you try to get people to come, move their company to your place, okay? Now, you can't go solicit to somebody else's customer, but if they're looking at opening up a plant in this city or this city, say if somebody's looking at something close to Grand Rapids, I mean, they're a fair game to me. Come to a smaller town, we got a highway out here. It's your best thing you've got is a highway. If you didn't have a highway, there was no chance for growth, because as long as you got a highway, there's always a chance for some growth.
So, how do you, how would you see yourself working then with the city? Because you're in a slightly different situation here in Lowell and we don't really have like an economic development engine in our community in terms of a city employee or anything like that. So, how would you see yourself sort of connecting with the city manager, city council and to help facilitate that growth?
Well, to me, it's just part of the, part of the shoe that you wear. I mean, every other place, we had to be involved in the economic development, why not here? I mean, it's, it's part of a power company is to grow. If, if the demands and, and equipment and material gets, keeps going up and wages keep going up and you got the same number of customers or less, you're going broke. So, you need to go out there and find ways to do that. I started with housing additions, giving rebates, I'll give you an example, we gave rebates or we just started to give rebates of a thousand dollars a lot for every lot they build that's all electric, no gas. Give it to the developer, you know? Now, Altus is a little different. They did sixteen houses at a time, maybe have seven or eight phases in a, in a development. Denton, they'd do fifteen hundred houses at a time or twenty-nine hundred apartments. I remember going out to one time and putting three thousand meters in, in two days in apartment complex, Brandon, all in one day. It actually took us two, but it was scheduled for one day, we were a little slow. But, you know, it's whatever you're used to. I don't know the whole business aspect of people wanting to come to Michigan. I will, if I get the job, I will know it very good, but just like I did with Oklahoma, I had to study it. And I had a few sessions with the lieutenant governor there in Oklahoma, Mr. Lamb. He was, he was very open to power companies giving rebates to go all electric and it wasn't me who he really wanted to talk to. We had an excellent economic development director and they were best friends growing up and... up and that's how I got myself in the door, but it really worked good for us. So there's got to be somebody in Lowell, uh, Lowell, Michigan that has a contact with somebody on some kind of economic development for the state. Is, is you just start chipping away with it. You know, a sculptor don't see the, uh, the sculpture's always in the rock. All he does is clear the rocks away, right? To clear the pebbles. So it's all there. All we gotta do is find the right way to remove the rocks around so we can get there. And we'll have different challenges and everything, but I think we could figure out a way. Start small. Don't go out there and get greedy. Something that you can't feed or you can't, you can't finance to get the load there. If you don't have enough power, there's no sense in them coming. But you, I don't know if you have an economical rate. We had a economical rate, uh, when a new business opened up, they, uh, as long as they met certain criterias, they got some, some off their KW demand through OMPA, paid the city them. So that's something that Michigan PPA may need to work on with them to help get them involved in helping, because they're in the same boat. They need to grow too. So we get, we get it all going together, just work it out. It's, it's, it's just like building a wall, you know? You gotta, you gotta drop a stone somewhere and start. And, but you can't start unless you go out there and want to do it too. So you have to want to do something. If you don't, that's, that's y'all's, how aggressive you go about economic, how much you wanna do, that's something that board has to really think about and, and them guidelines are gonna come from you guys. They're gonna come from you using all your knowledge of this power company to figure out what can we do and still stay afloat and anything's a risk, but, you know, you can get out there and play the game and grow if you can, but it's gonna come from you guys right there. You're not on this board just for, will you get, will y'all get two dollars a meeting? You know, you're not on it for two dollars to me. You're on it to make a difference and you believe in public power and that's what we do. We all work together. Them guys right there, they're part of that whole team too. They're this city too, so you gotta, you gotta work with them too. I imagine they'll get tired of me over their office too.
Thank you.
So you talked a little bit about transparency and listening and some of those types of things. So how would you describe your management style?
Well, my wife says I can be a bull or I can, I can be the flower child is what she used. My wife's a leftover from the sixties, okay? You gotta understand her. Beautiful woman, but man, she's got some of them way out flower child stuff, but.
You know, she can see this on YouTube.
I don't care. My wife.
Okay, just wanna remind you.
My wife is, is a very, very smart person. She's smarter than I am. That's how it's come, she picked me.
Teresa, right?
Yeah, it was her, I call her Lacy. Everybody else calls her Teresa, I call her Lacy. Her, her grandfather, and she gonna kill me for this, called her Dip Snuffer and her grandmother called her Lacy, so she didn't like Dip me calling her Dip Snuffer, so I call, I have to call her Lacy, so. That's how she got that. But anyway, uh, no, she's a good woman. Um, you have to be, you have to be in management, you have to be as strong as you need to be, but know when to take your finger off the throttle. Uh, a boss told me a long time ago, and this was a long time ago, he said, um, sometimes you don't have to be mad, they just gotta think you're mad and they'll go out there and give you a little bit more. You know? So, you know, it's, it's, it, it all depends on the situation. I believe that if you work as a team, management sets everything that needs to get done and when you set goals and you set priorities and you let the guys that are going out there to build that line know what them are and you let them have an input in, in, in the decision-making, you know? Not, not, I'm saying we, we let the tail wag the dog, no. I'm just saying you listen to them and when they buy ownership into that, I don't care if they're union or non-union, they're gonna go to work and they're gonna have pride in what they do and if they got pride in what they do, they're gonna give you the best job, they're gonna get it done, fish, their productivity's gonna increase and you know what? They're gonna take care of your equipment that you buy them, they're gonna appreciate it a lot more. It, it follows the whole gamut from then on and all you do is stay true with them. Never lie to them. Tell them upfront, this is what we need to do. I never worried about going through B if I can go to C and then there. If I need to go to C, I don't always have to go through B. There's always a better way to do it. It's just sometimes you gotta prove it to me. I don't, I don't have a problem letting people try their own way, uh, as long as it's economic, safe and you can cash that check. You know, then go ahead and do it. But main thing is safety. Uh, I've been in this business a long time and under my watch, nobody's ever been burnt and I push it really hard and I believe everybody should have it. You can kill a company by one death. I, I don't ever wanna knock on somebody's door. So that's the only thing that I really set in stone is safety rules. Anything else? You show me a better way, I'm a smart enough person to understand it. But very, very few in my lifetime has somebody showed me a better way to do something. I had some good teachers. I had some real good teachers.
So you talked about our council members that are here being part of the team.
The one sitting sideways, I don't think he likes me, so. Not sure he's looking.
Um, so how, if, if you were general manager here, what do you think your role would look like in our community? How would you engage with our community?
Oh, you have to be part of the community.
What does that mean to you? What is that like?
Well, you, you, me, I, I, I like to go to the civic groups and talk about what we do, uh, get them involved in it. I like to do, I see y'all do a food drive. I like that, I like food drive. We did a deal, uh, for people that was in hospitals to help pay their bill while they was in a hospital. Uh, it's kinda greedy 'cause, you know, a power company gets the money, but, you know, we, we had a little group together that went out and helped collect and made money and ladies make quilts and they sold them once a year and we put that money in a deal and when people would apply for that because they were low income and they had, uh, hospital bills or something like that and they couldn't afford that ninety-nine dollar electric bill this month 'cause they was in a hospital, that fund paid for it. And community involvement is, that's, it goes back to public power. That's what you're here for. That's why we're not at a investor owned, that's why we're, we're here at the public power places because that's what we wanna do is make that community part of us too. You go to church, you go to, you go to committee deals. Now, you never get up there in government. I don't believe in government getting up on the pulpit. Believe me, y'all, y'all never get up there and preach up there. Might preach on a soapbox someplace else, but I will never preach in the church because that's somebody qualified and not as bad a sinner as I am. But, uh, we have, uh, I'm in Quanis, so, uh, I was, you know, I was there all the time, but I had to go to several of the other ones, the Lions Club, several of the other dealers to give speeches because I was, you know, there at the power company, you know? So you, you are part of them too. You have to go and when they want you to speak, you go speak. Denton always believed that we needed to go do it all over the place. I mean, I, I, I think I gave a hundred speeches on how to make a million dollars worth of a power company without really trying. There's a, there's a paper I put together on power factor improvement back in ninety-two and I presented it at Anaheim at the APPA conference out there. It was a forty-five minute meeting that went three hours. They just canceled everything else that afternoon 'cause people wanted, just kept on asking, I mean, they, we had a crowd in there and they just kept on, and I think I gave that paper out, I don't, thousands, I, I, I made thousands of copies back then to people so they understand how to fix your power factor. Real simple. Most people overthink it. I can show you a quick few Dan rules or thumb that will fix your power factor and save you money.
So obviously, I mean, from seeing your resume and talking about APPA, um, you've been actively involved in that. So my question is, you'd actively pursue, um, being a member, a, a board member or chairman of the MPPA, Michigan Public Power Association?
That'd be up to, I, I, I always figured that's up to the board. If the board wants me there, that's what the board deal, that's your decision that you, when you tell me what you want me to do, that's what I, that's what I go do. The way I understand it from the time I grew up in this business is you answer to the board and you work at their pleasure and if they want you up there doing that, they may have somebody else that they have. We had a, at Denton, we had a older guy, uh, his name was Ernie Toz, he was our, uh, electric director before Sharon was and Sharon didn't have time and she didn't wanna be on it. So instead of the board picking somebody else, they let, they let the retired guy do it. And Ernie would come in, you know, after the meeting, he'd go over it with us and everything was said in the meeting in Denton. It's really what the board, I mean, he didn't do it long, I mean, he did it a couple of years, but, um, it's really at your place or whatever, whatever you decide if that's where we need to be. I think the general manager should be there, that's my opinion, because that's part of your generate, that's, you gotta make sure that's a hundred percent. I mean, you gotta make sure that we understand what they're doing. Uh, I had people at OMPA before I was on the board, just going to every meeting. I went to every meeting, uh, and listened to them and our, our city manager was the one that was on it, uh, a city administrator before we had a city manager. He, uh, he answered to the mayor. The mayor, we, we had a strong mayor for him to come, but the mayor was seventy-eight, seventy-nine, he didn't wanna do it, so this city administrator did it. But he didn't understand it. So I would actually have to text him, which was a vote, was he... So the only reason he wanted on it was prestige. It's, comes back to one of the rules that I live by. If you don't have nothing to give to a meeting, you don't have nothing to take from a meeting, you shouldn't be in the meeting. You got to be a part of it, not just a, somebody sitting in a room. You have to be part of that. And, uh, I believe a general manager really is the person that really needs to sit on that position, but that's clearly up to the board. That's your decision, officer. If you told me that I, you didn't want me there, that they had somebody, you want me to focus on something else, that's what I would do. I'd focus on this power company, but I know everything that was going on in that meeting too. I need to go to them meetings anyway, so I might as well be. That's, that's my thought of it, but here I am randomly now and.
Do you have any questions, Brad?
No ma'am, I'm, I'm good. I, I remember everything we say and, uh, so that's, that makes it real good for me, so, uh, I like, uh, I like solving problems. Uh, that's the fun part of me. I love teaching guys how to make a power company work. I love it when the light bulb comes on their head 'cause you can see it and they go, oh, I understand that now. And when you do that and you've done it as many years as I have, you really appreciate the small things. You know, when a guy comes up through the deal and he kinda finally gets it, how things work and how things, how the pieces of the puzzle goes together and why if this happens, this, this costs you over here and vice versa. And how you make them decisions depends on that chessboard. And you, you never play a game to lose. I don't believe in participation ribbon, so I, I play to win. I play to be the best. I play that we are gonna be, have the best attitude and we're gonna have the best customer response there is. We're going to live up to public power. I've been in this thing a long time and if I didn't believe in it, I wouldn't be here today. So I appreciate your time. You got a note?
I can always keep, I'm.
I got all night. I know you got other pages.
So being such, I mean, I know a little bit about Denton because we, uh, six years in row, we have attended the, uh, lineman's rodeo. So again, I've tended it with our lineman. I think it's a, a great, a great thing. But, uh, my question to you, so I know a little bit the size of Denton, going from, and I don't know the size of Altus, but going from such a big company down to thirteen to seventeen employees.
Altus is the same size as yours.
Okay.
Okay.
So I mean, I, my, my question was, which I probably know the generic answer, but was like, are you gonna be bored with just having thirteen employees and?
No sir, I'm never bored. I'll find something to go out there and look at. I'll guarantee you. You know, I rode half you streets today, this afternoon, I'll ride the other half.
And you, and you also talked about growth. The thing, one of the challenges of Lowell, I think, is we're, we're pretty bound by, um, by the city limits. Again, twenty-five percent of our customers come outside the township, but that's where we get into, you know, uh, consumers' energy versus Lowell Light and Power, et cetera. There's certainly growth outside the city limits, but we're pretty landlocked. I mean, sure, there's a few new houses going up here and there, but, I mean, so that interests me too, your ideas of how do we make Light and Power grow? Do we, and, 'cause we've looked at different things of, of, do we add more services? Do we add, um, fiber optics to our, to our line of things? At one time, we did have, Lowell had their own cable TV, um, again.
I know she sold it.
And you, we, we did reluctantly, um, because, uh, I think you touched on it earlier of not keeping up, not, you know, growing and everything. And it, in my opinion, it was neglected and so to keep up with the ever-changing, uh, things that are going on in cable TV and fiber optics and the IT world and everything, that Lowell had not done that. And so it became kinda cost prohibitive to continue on, so that's why they, they sold it. But, so now we're going, well, do we get, because we are kinda limited in size-wise and we need that growth, what other opportunities do you think there are out there? Or what have you seen or what have you been a part of?
Well, I, I'll tell you, I come from Denton, Texas, okay? Work, I come from Powder Point, Texas, a little bitty old town, but I'm twenty-five miles to the south, a little bit west is Denton, Texas. And if you wanted a job, you really had to go to Denton when I was a kid. When I went to work for a power company, at the edge of town right there at I-35 and 380, there was a company called Denton County Electric Co-op. Today, they're called Co-Serv, one of the biggest co-ops in the United States. Gas, telephone, cable TV, security, electricity, the whole gamut. But at one time, they was right there in Denton. Their home office, their barn, their everything was right there and inside the city limits of Denton. We just bought them out and moved them. Today, there's a Walmart, super Walmart there, there's a super Target there, there's a super K-Mart there, there's a gas station, there's a, there's a Cracker Barrel, there's, and it's all on the same corner where they was at. That revenue there, the foresight we had of pushing them out of the way back in the eighties, gave us that opportunity today, or gave Denton opportunity today because it was still grassland when I left. We just bought them out and moved them. Altus. Altus, uh, we had a company called Southwest Rural Electric, they were in town with us. As a matter of fact, they cut one side of our town and took customers down this one road in the city limits. I'll give you an example, the air force base was fed by Western Farmers Electric Co-op, they're the generating company for the co-ops in Oklahoma, one of the generating companies. And I first got there as the first, I was, I wasn't there too long and, and I heard this rumble that, um, the, uh, base housing was getting, the military sold out their base housing. They're gonna lease it out for, for fifty years to a private company. Ooh, wait a minute, that means you can't feed off that transmission line that fed that substation that fed that, that's owned by the federal government, the air force base, that's gonna feed that house edition. So now you gotta have distribution in there. They had distribution when it was all in there. So the co-op went in there and they said that they would take it over, Southwest Rural, which is fed by Western Farmers, so the load state had the same generators. They said they would, uh, take it over, they just needed five hundred thousand dollars and they'd take over the eight hundred houses. I told them we'd take it over for nothing. Just give me all the infrastructure out there and I'll just take it over for nothing, you won't have to pay me a dime. It's a hundred thousand dollar bill a day for Altus today. When opportunities come up, not, you don't get one like that every day, believe me, but when they come up, you have to be able to recognize them, you have to have some kind of mechanism in place, some kind of reserve in place and plan in place that when an opportunity comes up, you don't let it go by because we decided we wanna talk about it for eight months. You have to lay the criterias down of what we want, what we're gonna do and how we're gonna do it and how we're gonna pay for it and how our partners on the other side of the city's gonna work with us on it and how we're gonna work with them on it. And we gotta have that all in place as a board and as, as a utility company, so when the opportunity comes, I don't know what it's gonna be up here, but there's always gonna be one sooner or later, that's gonna let you grow a little bit or let you get a footy hold into something and you just keep your, you just keep your eyes wide open. You know the movie, uh, The Eyes Wide Shut, you know, remember that? You gotta be paying attention and you gotta, that's why the general manager's job is so important and the board is so important of keeping them eyes and ears out there and see what's going on in the community and what's coming on, on the outskirts and the other cities and everything else. Because when you see that, then you're able to say, hey, we got a mechanism, we pick up, you know, two hundred KW load out there on the edge of town. If it's dual certified and it's not illegal to go ask them and they're customers, they're fair game. And I'd rather have them on my barbecue pit than somebody else's.
Dan, we're forty-five seconds from our next interview, okay? I'll get out of here. So we're gonna have...
I apologize for taking up too much of your time.
No, you've been very... Really enjoyed talking with you.
Just trying to keep...
Yeah, we need to wrap this up here.
Oh, no problem, I understand.
Thank you very much for coming in.
I was kinda odd that y'all only said an hour, because the last one I went to was five and a half hours.
Next time, we're gonna send them up for two hours. We learned.
Thanks, sir. Let me do this.
Well, that's right, forgot.
It just, it just don't wanna get away.
I understand. It'll be better in a couple weeks.